Welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 8, 2020. We are and will be continuing for the next month, per the Governor's Executive Order, to be operating our meetings via Zoom. So a couple of things to note for anyone who signs on as a participant. You will appear in our participant list muted. If you have something to say at the point at which we have public comment, please go to the participant window. There is a button for raise hand. You'll raise your hand. We'll notice and we'll unmute you. So I have a bunch of announcements to make, but I will hold those for a moment. And welcome to our meeting, our State Assemblyman Tom Ebonati, who has joined us tonight to offer some comments and also to respond to any questions we might have. Welcome, Assemblyman Thomas Ebonati.
Mr. Mayor, nice to see you and all of the board members. You do look a little different in that little square box.
I think we look better, possibly. I don't know.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Yes, well, I'm in Albany right now. We're in the middle of a session. We're doing it in combination of Zoom and in person. So we have, many of the members have come to Albany. We sit in our offices, we work on Zoom. And then if we want to speak, we can either speak on Zoom or go down to the floor and get permission to go out onto the floor and speak. So it's a combination. We're slowly working our way back to a more normal situation. The, clearly, there has been an impact from this, from this virus. The governor has slowly reopened the state. We are dealing with some major, major impacts. I know you have been dealing with them on the ground. I start with a comment that I saw on Facebook and I use everywhere. And that is, just because your parachute has slowed your descent, doesn't mean you can take it off. And I think that's quite appropriate for where we are. We're almost at ground level, but we still have cases out there. And it only takes your contact with one other person who may have COVID for you to get it and to spread it to your family. So we have to be cautious, we have to be careful. I know people are in a hurry to get out there and to get back to a normal life, particularly parents with kids who can't wait to have those kids go back to school and get out of their hair. But we do have to do this one step at a time. As some of you know, I have not been, I have been a major critic of a lot of the policies that this governor has, even though we're both Democrats. But I do make a point of complimenting him on the way he handled the COVID crisis. He stepped up. He stepped up to the plate. He provided the leadership that was desperately needed. And I'm not going to say he did everything right, but I give him a lot, a lot of credit for taking the leadership, taking a lot of the heat also for doing things that had to get done. And I really think he saved a lot of lives in New York and probably around the country because he provided an example of what should be done. It's costing us a ton of money. I know that we passed our normal $176 billion budget. We tried to maintain everybody at last year's level with no cuts. And in addition to that, we gave the governor authorization to spend about $80 billion, which is a lot of money considering the original budget is $176 billion. And some $60 billion of that was anticipated to be unemployment insurance, which we get, we hope to get most of it back from the federal government. There was another $25 billion for response for medical supplies and anything else the Health Department had to do. These are huge numbers. We don't have all of the numbers yet as to actually what was spent, but I know the state is still spending money on the response. So it puts us in a very, very difficult position. The governor is pushing very hard for federal funding, and so are we. People keep saying, why don't you go back and raise some taxes? Why don't you try other revenue sources? When are you going to deal with how the budget should finally look? And the answer is always, let's wait for the federal government. We're expecting that within a month or so, they're going to take some action. We'll see what it is, so we'll know how bad the problem really is. And if we don't get enough money from the federal government, then we're going to have to figure out where the cuts are going to come from. And that, that's going to be a problem. Because I know you're dependent on state money. The schools are dependent on state money. Everybody's dependent on state money in one way or another. And so we don't want to have to make those tough decisions if we can avoid it. At the same time, of course, we're dealing with, with a moral crisis in this country. And I was in Pleasantville the other day for one of the rallies, one of the Black Lives Matters rallies. The mayor, I know, was there. And, and that's, that's really, you know, it highlights a problem in this country that's been here for a long, long time. And that's why we're in Albany. We're dealing with some, some pieces of legislation trying to restrict, I guess, the way police officers respond. And that's a problem. And I know it's difficult for small departments like yours to even find time to, to train your, your cops more than they've been trained. I was talking to one, one chief, and he said it costs like $3,000 a day just to take one of the local cops and send them for training because he doesn't have enough cops to replace him. He has to put people on overtime. And so when you figure out all the costs of the training, transportation, and overtime, he figures it's like $3,000 a day, which is a lot of money for a small village if you're trying to train 20 or 25 cops. I've spoken with your chief, I've spoken with some of the other chiefs. I'm hoping to have something of a dialogue with them to try to figure out a way to move forward. So far, in, at this time around, there haven't been any problems in the suburbs. But we want to make sure that that, that remains the case. So at any time, if you want to talk about it, I'd be glad to come to one of your work sessions. If you have some ideas on, on what the state can do to help out, I'm looking for the, for those. But in the meantime, we're dealing with a whole series of measures to, one of which would be to repeal 50A, which is a section of the Civil Rights Law that provides a shield for, for the records of uniformed officers. And there's some, there's been jockeying back and forth as to what should we change in the FOIA law to protect the privacy of police officers and their families and corrections officers and their families, while at the same time disclose to the public the relevant information. And we have a bill on that. We're supposed to be dealing, debating it and dealing with it tomorrow. Then we have a whole series of other things that, you know, one thing we just passed, for example, is to make it clear that a person who's not involved in an incident has the right to film anything that's going on around them. With their, you know, people take out their cameras, their, their telephones and, and take a video. And those have been very helpful to shed some light on some of the things that have been happening in various places. So in, in New York City, there have been situations where people who try to do that have been pushed around by police officers. And so we made it clear that that's something that you have a right to do. We went through a whole series of bills like that and we'll be doing some more tomorrow. I also wanted to talk a little bit to you about, about some of the things that are going on in your village. I realize that things are very tight. I've been trying to get some state money to deal with some of the, the things that you need to deal with. I know we've been dealing with your administrator and your mayor and, Mr. Mayor, have you discussed the sanitation truck?
Well, we have, although I'm not sure in a context where many people would notice, so.
Okay. Normally, and again, you know the conversation. Normally, I would say, I would try to get you state money for things that you wouldn't normally pay for yourself. So I know we did some, we tried to help out a little bit and got, I guess it was $250,000 to do something on the plaza at, at Manville Road. And that money, I think, is on its way.
It is, yes. That project is on, it is while we figure out which end is up. But that is a great help and it's deeply appreciated.
Right. So that's the type of thing I usually like to do. But given this crisis, kind of shifted gears and said, if the villages need some equipment or something like that, we'll try to be helpful. And I'm understanding that there's been discussions. I think, if you, I don't know if you've put the paperwork in yet or not. Joanne Sewell, who's my chief of staff, is on tonight. And I think we've got $250,000 for a sanitation truck coming along. And like I said, that's the kind of thing you would normally take out of tax revenues. And I wouldn't even think of trying to get state money for. But at this, at this time, I realize how tight your budget is. And if you've got a need like that, we've shifted gears and we're trying to help the different villages with that type of, of, of help. In the past, of course, in the past, of course, we did get some money for the children's room at the library. And we've got some money for, I think we just, I think we're getting you some multimodal money. That's what the, the type of account is called. And I think there's $50,000 for some video detection and safety, safety improvements that you needed to do. And I'm very pleased to be able to help out to do that. I just wish we had more money, you know? And we're trying to, actually, I'm trying to get it through. What was that?
Don't we all?
I know. I'm trying to get it through before the governor decides he's going to grab it all and not let us spend it. You know, it's that kind of thing. I'm pleased to be able to be helpful in the stuff that really matters, matters to you guys.
Well, and it certainly happened, so it's much appreciated.
Yeah. And I cherish the relationship I have with, with, with all of you, particularly the mayor. We talk on occasion. He knows that he can call me at any time and I, and I call him when I have a question or so. I, I think it's really important that we, we have that kind of relationship so that we, we talk, what's going on on the street? You're the guys who are doing that. And, you know, I, I'm trying to be helpful. I'm fascinated that, you know, I, I know off, off camera, we were talking a little bit about some of the impacts of trying to reopen. And that's a, and you're struggling with it. And that's something that we have a conversation about all of the time. Up until this week, the governor's office, for about 90 days straight, had a 5:30 conference call where all of the assembly members and senators from the, from Westchester County were on the call with their staffs.
That must be an early call.
Oh, yes, it was. Yes, it was. But we were talking about those types of things, you know? Like, when are you going to reopen? How are you going to do this? You know, I mean, there was a point where we were talking about getting PPEs for people because they, in the beginning, because people weren't able to get them. And then we shifted to the unemployment insurance where there was, you know, the normal year, you might have 50,000 people ask for unemployment. And this year, I think they had 2.5 million in the space of two months. So that was, and our offices were just flooded with people who were not getting the unemployment benefits that they had hoped to get. And we still have a few, but I think most of the cases have been taken care of. But now we've been talking about the reopening and things like, you know, like trying to open swimming pools and parks and, and, you know, restaurants and, and businesses. And it's easy to talk about it if you're sitting on a telephone. But you have to try to make it work is, is very difficult. I mean, when you have restaurants that are, that don't have, don't have much street in front of them. How do they have outdoor restaurant? How do they open up outdoors? You know, and if they, if they're small places, how do you have social distancing inside the restaurant? It's just, just very difficult. And of course, our downtown areas are built around restaurants and service establishments like that. So I don't envy, you know, what you have to do to try to work your way through this. It's, it's very, very difficult. But we're trying, so if you come back with some suggestions, please don't hesitate to, don't hesitate to let, let me know. And I will take them back to the governor's office.
All right.
I'm trying to have the same conversation with our schools. I just saw a message from somebody saying schools are now having problems getting PPEs as they go to open, personal protection equipment as they open for the summer. So this is an issue that we thought we dealt with a long time ago. I guess it's, it's not over. It's still, it's still there. And also, if you want to have a conversation sometime about, about how we should be dealing with police officers. And I started to talk about that a little while ago. It's, it is difficult. You've got to make sure they're properly trained. Got to make sure that they know crowd control and how to do it properly. And at the same time, still protect the public. So anyway, thank you for giving me a chance to say hello. Any questions? I'd be glad to try to respond.
Thank you for all of that, Tom. And thank you again for the grants you've been able to steer our way, especially this sanitation truck, as you can imagine, getting a quarter of a million dollars to keep that out of our capital budget is a big, big, big help by the time when other revenues are cratering. So very much appreciated. Back to your comments in Albany. Your session has only a couple of weeks left, is that right?
We are not planning on, I, I don't think we're going to be having a formal close to the session. We missed a lot of time. I've been suggesting to the speaker and pushing hard for, I guess when kids miss school, they call it compensatory time afterwards. I've been suggesting the same thing here. We have a lot of work to do. You know, we've got, we've got a lot of COVID response that we have to deal with. We have a lot of this, this, this moral crisis that I spoke about. You know, we, we really have to still deal with parts of that. There are a lot of local bills that still have to be dealt with. We did do most of the renewals of sales taxes and things like that in the budget for a change. We usually don't do that, but we did get them in to make sure we get them done. But I'm hopeful and I think that the leadership is looking the same way, that we will be coming back periodically for maybe during the summer and maybe even into the fall. As I said earlier on, we, we are doing this partially on, on Zoom and partially in person. And I think we can continue that all the way through. I don't expect we're going to be meeting every day for a week or two weeks, but I think we'll be coming back. This week, where it was originally supposed to be a Monday, Tuesday, got expanded to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Now there's even some rumors we might be here on Thursday. I don't know, we'll see. But I would expect maybe again in another three or four weeks, we might come back for a few days. And so if there's a problem that needs to be solved, let us know and we'll see if we can get it on the agenda.
So there were a couple of items that I know are floating around on the agenda that you've always heard from, from the New York Conference of Mayors, the Association of Towns, and from Westchester Municipal Officials Association. One of them was some communities interested in the idea that the state might open up a retirement incentive that would be available at, at the option of an, of a community to opt in. I'm not certain that that is of significance to us in Pleasantville, but certainly a bunch of our WAMOa brethren imagine that they may need to cut the headcount and thought that might be a means to do it. Is there discussion about that active?
I've already put the bill in. I actually put the bill in. George Latimer mentioned it, Paul Finer mentioned it. So Joanne Sewell, who's on the, on the, on the call with us. She, my chief of staff, also my lawyer. And we decided to take the 2009 bill. I think it went into effect in 2010, if I'm not mistaken, or something like that. We just took that bill, quickly updated it and put it in as a placeholder. We would like to have some discussions on this. If you have somebody, if you want to talk about it or somebody on your staff would like to tell us what, what was right and what was wrong with that bill, so we can start to, to shape it to fit the current environment. You know, one of the things that I was told was that one required a permanent elimination of a position if somebody retired and you didn't replace them immediately, which is not a good idea. And I think that's something that we might want to change because you may want to leave some spots vacant for a while. And then when things get better again, fill them again. That might be one, one thing we want to look at. But if you have some other suggestions, it would be very, very helpful.
All right, so I'll, I'll circle. I'm the, this year is president of Municipal Officials Association. And just like most of us, my tenure has been extended past the point at which I normally would have been in this role because there isn't a means to get together to vote the next slate in. But at any rate, there, there has been quite a bit of discussion about that. And I'll come back to you with comments from all of those folks. My other question to you was, and you touched on it earlier. I know the governor has indicated, and the budget allows the possibility that mid-year he may, if necessary, trim state aid to municipalities and school districts. Is it too early to say what the odds of that happening are?
I think it's way too early. But I think the speaker has made it very clear that we would come back in session. If, early on, there was, there was not such a discussion. The speaker's position basically was, it'll be bad news no matter who does it. And so, you know, we, we laid out what we thought could be the, the agenda, the way we should spend the money. And if there had to be cuts, if the governor didn't kind of follow along the plan that we had and cut too much in any place, we'd come back in session. I think now they're talking a little bit more about if the, when the governor makes his proposals, we'll come back in and take a look at them. But the governor has held off. He's made threats and made it clear to our congressional delegation that this will be a disaster. And so please work hard and get us some money. And I think that's the way we've been talking about it. The speaker has, has made it clear he doesn't want to talk about any of this after we see what Congress is going to do. So it's really too early on that. But it would be helpful to get a, an analysis of, or maybe for you to start an analysis of how much our municipalities in Westchester get and where. And what, what is the most important part?
It will not take much effort on our part in the Village of Pleasantville since our aim money is, what is it, $50,000?
That's what I thought.
And that would be a number that has remained stagnant for something like 12 years.
Do you get any CHIPS money?
We get some CHIPS money, yes. Again, I mean, we're in the happy slash unhappy position that we get so relatively little that a cut can't hurt us as badly as it can hurt the bigger places. But by the same token, you know, we're all in this together. And obviously, the school districts are at great risk. So it all comes out of the same taxpayers' wallet, so.
No, we're, we're aware of that. And we, we were hoping to be able to increase the amount this year. And then, of course, we got hit with the COVID crisis and, and it's, it's, you know, let's face it, all of us like to spend money to do things for our community. None of us want to have to cut things. And particularly in a time when, you know, the governor was talking about cutting Medicaid. And we were pushing back very hard on that. And then the federal government came along and said, well, you can't access any of the monies that we're providing if you, if you cut Medicaid and don't maintain your, your commitment that you had made before. So any cuts after a certain point, you would forfeit state, federal monies. So that kind of helped, that kind of buttress the position that the legislature had been taking, especially looking at the COVID crisis coming. We said, you know, Medicaid supports our hospitals and a lot of our healthcare institutions. How could you possibly cut them at a time like this? So, so that, that was, that was one thing that we were looking at at the time. And we're still very afraid that at, at the end of all of this, the governor's going to try to cut back on Medicaid. And in the past, people always looked at Medicaid as, well, that's the program for the poor. But really, it's not. It really provides monies to all of our hospitals, our, our healthcare centers. It provides programs for kids with disabilities. It provides things for people, senior citizens. So it's been woven into just part of, every part of our life. And so if we were to make a cut there, you might not see it directly in your budget, but it would increase the burden on the municipalities because the services that were being paid for with Medicaid wouldn't be there anymore. And now all of a sudden, people will be looking to the municipalities for the help that they were getting through Medicaid. So it's very complex. And like I said, we're just going to have to wait to see what the federal government does first before we, we have any of these discussions. But I do know that the tax revenues are down, which is going to be a problem. We're going to have to deal with that.
Yeah, for sure. All right, other questions from anybody else?
Tom, with regard to the legislation that you're working on on policing, both 50A and things like chokeholds, is everything going to apply to all the local police forces as well as any state officers?
Well, the, yes, 50A, of course, applies. So for those people who are not familiar with it, 50A is a section of the Civil Rights Law that puts a blanket shield on, on the entire background record of any police officer, corrections officer, or fireman, I believe it is. I think it applies to them. There may be one other uniformed department that is also protected.
Correctional EMS?
Yeah, it might be EMS, right. But only paid EMS. The, so I'm expecting we're going to repeal that. That we have the strongest shield in the country. I think there's only one other state like that. And then there's a whole spectrum of statutes across the country. There are a couple of, couple of states that don't provide any shield at all. But I think what we're going to be doing here is we're going to eliminate 50A and, and provide protections for information that should be kept secret. As far as chokeholds go, that, we passed that today and that does apply across the board. But there will be things like, we'll be requiring the state police to have body cams. That doesn't apply to the local municipalities. I think it would be a good idea, but it gets expensive.
Really, really expensive.
Right.
Right.
Right. And I don't, I don't know what it costs per cop. I'd love to hear those numbers from the, from, from you guys to see what it would cost to equip all of the police officers in Westchester with body cams or at least have dash cams on the cars. But yeah, I know that's expensive.
Right. But at this point. One of the issues with body cams is the initial outlay is significant. And then the, the, the storage for the data, the video storage is an expensive venture. And it puts you on, amid the many advantages of it, it also puts you on, on the treadmill of tech upgrades forevermore, so.
Right, right. I know, I know police officers are often reluctant, but there have been situations where actually the police officer's version is, is documented by the, by the cam, by the video. So it works both ways. It, it highlights when, when police officers do something wrong, but in many cases, it also vindicates them. So it's really technology that we should try to get. The problem is, at this point, it's just financially very difficult unless we can find some state monies for that. And like I said, I don't see any state monies for anything at the moment.
Just to follow up on that, sir. Do you, you know, you're aware, I'm sure, of the bill that was put into the Congress this morning from the Democrats, I think it was bipartisan, but on prison reform and, and police reform. Do you think there would be federal money for police cams, even down at local levels?
I don't know. At this point, I don't know. Given, given what's going on in this country, I think Congress is going to have to respond. And that's the kind of thing that, that I think everybody could agree to. No matter how conservative you are, how liberal you are, how progressive, how right wing, whatever, you can agree that giving money to localities to provide equipment is a good thing to do.
Right. So maybe there'll be some relief that way.
I would hope so. I would hope so.
All right, any further questions? There have been, I want to thank you again, Tom Ebonati.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate your coming, very much appreciate your attendance to Pleasantville, very much appreciate the fact that we think of you as a Pleasantvillian and your address is Pleasantville, even if you're actually in the town of Mount Pleasant. You're in our school district. So you're a native son.
Yes, and I spend a lot of time in your village and I'm waiting for those restaurants to reopen so I can come downtown and, and go to dinner.
And while we're at it, if Joanne is still on the line, a shout out to Joanne Sewell in your office, who has been a great help to us and keeps the gears greased on stuff we need to see happen. So thank you, Joanne, much appreciated.
And we'll keep in touch over the next few weeks to, as I said, if you, if you come across some things that are a problem that, in what you're trying to do in responding to COVID or reopening COVID or whatever, please let me know and we'll carry that message back to the governor's office. It's interesting that sometimes it, it has worked. We have pressed for a lot of different things. And, and day after day, when it, when we, when we rotate, a different assemblyman every day says the same thing because they're hearing it from their municipalities, sometimes things actually get changed and, and the governor's office will listen.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. A virus, a Star Wars virus zapper and we'll be.
Right. I think Nicole wants to say something.
No, I just wanted to thank you for filling us in. I, I think this is a time when working across, you know, local and state level is really vital. So I just appreciate your coming and filling us in.
Thanks for letting me join you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Much appreciated.
All right, I'll figure out how to leave. There it is.
All right. Thank you, Tom. All right. So back to our regular meeting. Thank you, Assemblyman Ebonati. Kind of start from the top again. Today is Monday, June 8th, but our next regular meeting is two weeks from today on Monday, June 22. And folks can watch live on Zoom if you pick up our meeting agenda at pleasantville-ny.gov, our, our website. That is a, a location where you can find the Zoom links for the meetings of this board and every other board that is meeting remotely at this point. Shout out again to go to the homepage on the left side, subscribe to news. You can subscribe to news and agendas of each of the various boards and get that stuff automatically. So pleasantville-ny.gov. Within a short period of time, we download the recorded Zoom meeting and thanks to the folks at PCTV, thank you Shane McGaffey. It appears relatively quickly at PCTV76.org where you can pick it up on demand and watch this meeting as well as past meetings. So obviously looming extremely large in all of our minds and in the minds of the nation in the last several weeks has been the tragic story of George Floyd's murder and the, the impact that has had around the country. Obviously we're at a moment here, and I think rightly so, where there is a, a community of commitment, both in the streets, in forums like this and behind the scenes to try to take this series of tragedies that have happened in recent weeks and months and turn them into some kind of progress. So as Tom Ebonati mentioned, there was a, a rally that happened in Pleasantville last week. And both Chief Kretzner and I spoke briefly. Both Chief Kretzner and I have a statement up at pleasantville-ny.gov if you're interested in, in taking a look at that. And maybe even more helpfully, we did a Zoom Town Hall meeting last week. Also available in its taped form at PCTV76.org. For some of you who follow our goings on more carefully, we did a Town Hall meeting on Zoom about a month ago in the beginning of May, intended to do them again, which we did last week, beginning of June. Given all that's going on and given the fraught moment we find ourselves in, I think we're going to do that more often. Both as an opportunity to let you know what we're doing, but also to hear from all of you. Clearly this is a moment when these tragic circumstances ought to become the fulcrum by which we create some progress. So I can tell you that in the coming days and weeks, we'll have quite a bit more to say about all of the programs and policies in our police force, the kind of training we all have and, and the training that all of us as a community, as a school district, as residents, as police officers, as village employees will be taking in order to focus on the issues of prejudice and embedded racism. So a lot to be said about that going forward. But I just want to thank everybody who has participated so far. Lots of conversations going on in lots of forums and social media, on the streets, by phone, via email, via text. Some of them full of angst and all of that is both understandable and respected. And we look forward to continuing that conversation as we deepen the progress that we hope we have made. I just want to send a, a quick shout out to Chief Kretzner, who has proven himself not unexpectedly to be an extraordinarily available police chief. And we're proud to have him at the helm of what I think is a police force that is always looking to find ways to serve our community better and more fairly and more humanely. And we're all in lockstep to try to make that happen. Recognizing at every moment that there's something to be learned from every single thing that happens in order to find a way to do it better, to see how the other person felt about it, to understand the direct and indirect effect of all of our actions. And if we're all successful in doing that, we'll slowly build the bricks, put the bricks together that will build a better community. So I thank you for all of your participation so far and for the participation we expect to have going forward, including some very specific, very granular exploration of our police policies used to force all of the above. You heard from Tom Ebonati what's going on in the state. So amid the unrest we all confront in our lives in, in such a terrible time for this to happen when we're all trapped by pandemic. It might be that the collision of those two extreme stresses will in the end create a little bit of a crack in the universe to make progress perhaps faster than we might otherwise. So anybody want to add anything to that? Before I go into our COVID report.
Ian, do you want to say something about what you suggested during the work session?
Sure. As we enter this moment of natural reflection, I think it's important for each of us in any position of civic responsibility to think about, you know, what can we do to make sure that we are doing our part to create a society where every person has an equal right to exist, to work, to live and to, to participate? One of the things that I suggested that we do that we're going to undertake is to, we approved new use of force guidelines for our own police department. Last year in 2019, we're going to just take a look at that in light of some things we're learning now. And also in light of the pandemic to make sure that that we create the lowest possible chance for anybody getting hurt and put everybody in the best chance to always have just outcomes when our police officers encounter any member of the public.
And I will just add that I know there's been a lot going on on social media, a lot of which I have not, I have failed to follow closely just because of the demands of life in this homeschooling reality. But one thing is that I know there are groups, you know, trying to think about how they can engage civically. There's a potentially a group forming, looking at how this can become a more inclusive, diverse community. And so we've reached out to them to see if that's something that the village can partner with. We're certainly open to that. And I've been trying to encourage people to contact us directly with any ideas that they may have and to, to take this as a moment to follow, you know, local government, to follow our Facebook page, to follow our agenda so that if there are things we're missing or things that they think that they can contribute so that we can do a better job, they can be a part of that conversation.
So thank you both for that. I ratify every word you have uttered. So I appreciate that. And we've got some heavy lifting as every community in America does in the coming weeks, months and years. But certainly here in the village of Pleasantville, I think we have an awful lot of people looking to help and we will take advantage of that. So move to the report on the COVID pandemic. Westchester County just crested 34,000 total cases. And the very happy news is that that is an increase of only 46 from the last count. Testing is quite extraordinarily high relative to elsewhere in the country and the world. A total of 186,561 residents have been tested. In a community of, of roughly a million people, that's a, a strikingly high percentage. There have been horrifyingly nearly 1,400 fatalities from COVID here in Westchester County and more than 24,000 in New York State. The good news, as you have heard in many other places, is those numbers have all flattened. Clearly the good work through this extremely difficult quarantine has borne great results. And as you heard Tom Ebonati say, now we're in the phase of things starting to reopen and, and desperately need to do that in a way that both helps get us all back on our feet, but does so without giving COVID a chance to get back on its feet. So effective tomorrow, June 9th, New York State, the Mid Hudson region of New York State, of which we are a part, enters Phase 2. Phase 2 is probably the most public prominent piece of that is that it will now allow outdoor dining in restaurants. That was previously a Phase 3 activity, but it has been accelerated to Phase 2. So effective tomorrow, outdoor dining is allowed at restaurants, but a subject to some pretty heavy duty requirements, including substantial social distancing as well as protocols for how the restaurant operates. It requires that tables be minimum six feet apart. And it also requires that if there are tables outside, that safe pedestrian passage be provided around those tables at appropriate social distancing. So all of that presents a pretty significant challenge for us. We had a conversation earlier in work session and we are setting up a Zoom call on Thursday with our restaurant owners. Thank you, Paul Alvarez, our, we believe to be future trustee. If we can ever get an election to happen now, it's supposed to be September 15th. Paul's the vice president of the Chamber of Commerce and has offered to assist in all of that. What I can say from conversation so far is that I think every one of us, including Eric and Noreen in the village administration and Robert Hughes and Lyndon Camley in the building department, are looking to help our restaurants and our retailers in any way we possibly can. There are some problems attached to all of this. Lots of folks have talked about closing Wheeler Avenue some nights and maybe that will be a direction we can take. One concern attached to that is that some restaurants are also very much worried about protecting their takeout business and concerned that there might be some conflict there. And obviously there are a bunch of restaurants not on Wheeler and we'd like to find ways to help them as well. So comments are welcome, but I just want everyone to know that we are working on it. Joe commented earlier, the importance of doing it fast because this opening begins tomorrow officially. And so we're aiming to do that and to reduce the administrative hurdles as much as we can. We have a couple of resolutions on today that may sound like bureaucratic talk, but it is part of the process of trying to streamline the process and put in place the mechanism to allow people to do stuff they're not normally allowed to do.
May I, can I suggest a, maybe for this point, for this topic, because it's, it's, it's critical. I don't know which way it's going to go to close the streets or not close the streets, whether it's going to hurt some restaurants for their takeout service versus the restaurants that want to start their business and so on. I'm wondering if we could have a, a short work session next week. If we decide to, to allow restaurants to, to, to open in the street somewhere, some places, whether it's Wheeler Avenue or whether it's Washington Avenue or wherever it's going to be, to delay another week and another weekend, it's, it's just delaying the process. So I'm just suggesting to the rest of the board that if we could have a, a half an hour or 45 minute meeting next week, maybe we can resolve it or, or not. I mean, we might.
I think that's a great idea. Indeed, maybe I wonder, and we'll have to see what people's availability are. But we have this 10 AM Zoom call on Thursday with the restaurant owners. I wonder whether Thursday evening would be the occasion to give everybody feedback about what we heard.
I'll be here. So.
What'd you say?
I said, I'll be here.
Okay. Yeah, we're all.
And I'll be here.
One advantage of our Zoom life is that it's easier to be here even when you're not at home. Although odds are we're at home. I see a thumbs up from Paul. So.
Yeah, I couldn't make next Monday. So Thursday is good for me.
Okay. So Thursday evening would be good and then we can talk about it.
Marcy, does that, does that seem like work, a work session on Thursday evening?
Yeah, the, really our biggest hurdle will be allowing for enough time to publicly notice the local law.
So there's nothing we can do about that? So for instance, on Wheeler, you know, if, well, I guess Pub Street already has that area in front, but there's nothing we can do to expedite that part of the process?
No, we have to allow enough time to, to publicly notice.
How much time do you need to notice a law?
10 days, I believe.
10 days?
Does that have to be a public hearing?
Yes.
So what if we put in an add-on agenda item tonight? We don't have the law in place. I mean, we don't have.
No, it's on already.
We have it on tonight. It's Resolution 115.
Oh.
So we're in business. I mean, I think, I think we're, we're fast tracking that. So, but, but nonetheless, I think Thursday, when we've had, had a chance to sort of consolidate the feedback from the restaurant owners, it's time for the board to gather again and talk about what we could do. Among the challenges we'll confront is that there may be some solutions that might benefit the restaurants, but will be potentially costly to the village. And I, I think I can speak for myself in saying, you know, I am willing and believe we ought to incur some cost as needed to make this possible, but there's also likely a threshold. So.
Yeah.
All right.
From the community about how interested people are in this too. Could we maybe put out a survey on Facebook or something like that to get a sense of, you know, how many people actually would want to do outdoor dining?
Fine by me. I mean, I think that clearly any information is useful information. It's anecdotal reports and, and a lot of it. Restaurants obviously depend not only on Pleasantville folk, but people from neighboring communities.
Right.
Obviously some, I mean, that, that enters into the discussion. Some of the restaurant folks are saying, look, I, I, I am happy of the idea that I might be able to have some tables outside and, and get back in business, at least in a little broader way than I am right now. But I'm also not sure how much I should spend to do it in terms of waitstaff and the like. There's been discussion about the idea of tables that would be an opportunity for you to eat outside and feel like you were in the mix, but essentially get takeout instead of a full served meal. So, and, and maybe the answer to that is for restaurants to sort of decide for themselves what they would like to do if they have the capacity to have tables. But I do think there, there's some settings where we don't have too many options. Painfully, the restaurants on Bedford Road, narrow sidewalks on a county road that clearly isn't possible to close. I, I, I obviously look into hearing from all of them. I'm not sure what we can do for them. And as you already pointed out, we have some restaurants that already have outdoor space and maybe have some places to expand. If there's a means for parking lots to help out, maybe that's good. If we closed a piece of Wheeler, could we establish a, a, a place in Memorial Plaza where folks could park quickly for running over to get takeout? Not a long walk. So all of the above in the mix.
Maybe further down the road, we could sort of audition the civic space as a outdoor dining.
Yeah, right. So.
Oh, and Eric, if you could, you know, polling the restaurants, figuring out what they want, what they don't want, where they want to be, and then present it to us, I guess, on, on Thursday night. I mean.
I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll give you the feedback we get. So. All right, Paul Alvarez, you're on the hook here, pal.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. And I said, Eric, but Paul, yeah, you gotta, you gotta bring it to us and then see what we can go with it. Okay?
All right. So let me just continue on the COVID front and then we can get to the resolutions. As, as we have announced in the past, we made the, a difficult and still painful decision a few weeks ago that we would not hold a summer day camps this summer and that we would not open the pool. So I think we remain firm in that decision and feel as though our decision-making process has been ratified by what's come since. But, but just to be clear, there are some communities that are making a different decision. And some of those decisions are based on, on the way they feel about how they can operate their activities. And some are based on the fact that they have physical circumstances that are substantially bigger than ours. So one of the problems we have with our day camp obviously is that we depend upon the schools for a part of this space and we also depend upon pool. This year, the school has a bunch of capital work going on and they were, as they always are cooperative about trying to find different space. But for all the myriad reasons that you can imagine, the school district, just like the village, has its hands full figuring out how the world will look next week, much less come the opening of school in September. So having several hundred kids in our care, largely supervised by. by high school counselors, does not feel like a realistic option for us, and so that was the cause of our decision. On the pool front, there's been some more direct information about how pools can open, and the results are perfectly understandable, but again, awfully difficult to imagine how we could operate. The county, for example, which has a number of pools, is opening its pools on a reservation-only basis, capacity controlled. You would make a reservation and have a ticket to come at a certain time and be expected to leave at the end of that time slot. No locker rooms, no showers, bathrooms being essentially constantly cleaned and sanitized, teams of workers wiping down handrails and the like all the time, masks required, families required to stay 10 feet apart, masks obviously not required in the pool. If there's any good news in all of this, evidently chlorine is pretty good at killing COVID. But in an effort to maintain life safety, additional staff and Westchester County police officers on site to maintain social distancing requirements. So all I can say is, I really respect and appreciate the county's effort in doing that. They have both bigger facilities and more resources than we do. We probably have one of the smallest pool facilities, which is both, it's a blessing and it's a curse. It is just hard to imagine how we could achieve those kinds of guidelines at our pool at any kind of reasonable cost and arguably deliver the experience that we all mourn to folks who would come. Let's just say it very clearly would be unlike what all of us have said in the past, "Oh, let's take the kids to the pool." So there you have it. I just want to give you that background and let you know why we made the decision we made and where we remain. So barber shops and beauty salons may open as part of Phase Two. Again, we open to Phase Two tomorrow. And then lastly, I just want to remind everybody that, as the governor has repeatedly and I think rightly said, the state is maintaining careful monitoring of the seven metrics that allowed each phase to move to the next. And if the metrics start going the other way, and there are signs of COVID outbreaks or increased hospitalizations and the like, we run the risk of either slowing down the chance to go to Phase Three, or in the worst-case scenario, having a phase rolled back to the previous one. So masks, masks, masks. I think lots of people are doing a great job. Not everybody is. It feels like a patriotic decision to protect others against anything you might be carrying, and that means others will be protecting you against what they might be carrying. It isn't too much to ask. Put on a mask anytime you're in a public setting and cannot maintain a social distancing. Please, please, please. And on a slightly brighter note, but still COVID-related, a shout-out to the forthcoming graduates of Pleasantville High School. On Saturday, there was a one-day-delayed car parade of the 140-some-odd seniors who had graduated from Pleasantville High School, a great show of spirit and support, and I think a day that was much appreciated by lots of folks. So for seniors who are going to miss their regular graduation, although it will take place in a different form, but have lost the experience of being a senior at high school in June, it was a nice way to at least have a show of enthusiasm, and they delivered in speed. So any other announcements anybody would like to make?
Just on that point, for the car parade for the students, there were probably 100 cars. My house just happens to be right here near the school, so we got to see every single car, and we cheered them all on, and everybody on the street was out. They were down at the high school, they were down at the other end of the street, and I'm sure that there were people out on Bedford Road and everywhere. And it was just a terrific, terrific show of support for them, for the students, a show of the students showing what they can be and who they can be, and I just think it was great. The whole thing was great. That's all.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or announcements before we get to resolutions? All right. Just want to shout-out to Police Chief Eric Gressner, who I see has joined us in our Zoom call, but he and his team, all of the officers of the Police Department assisted in yesterday's parade. And as so often happens, many hands make light work. They did a great job. The whole thing came off extremely smoothly, and at least the part I stood in front of appeared to be maintaining pretty good social distancing. So everybody mild of good behavior, had a good time. Thank you, Chief Gressner and the Pleasantville Police Department. And likewise, thank you to the Volta Fire Department, which showed up in force to add some sirens and impressive trucks to the proceedings. All right. Is there any comment from the public? Do we, if any member of, I see Steve Lord has raised his hand. Noreen, can you unmute Mr. Lord? Did you have something to say? Now he's muted again. He has nothing to say.
There we go. No, he was just getting ready for the resolutions. That's all.
All right, fine. All right. Is there any comment from the public? If we have any members of the public, if you want to say something, we're watching on the participant list. Hit the raise hand button, and we will respond. I see nothing. So with that, going in the order we would normally go, Nicole, Resolution 107, which inexplicably is in red. I don't know why that is.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to execute a revocable license agreement with Altice USA Inc. to install a fiber-optic capable cabinet on Church Street, property section 99.19, block two, sections 20 and 22, to include maintaining a minimum four-foot-wide level area as a grass walkway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, you want to just give the quick background? We've talked about this the last two work sessions.
Sure. So this is part of Cable Vision's Fiber-to-the-Home strategy, and they are rolling out these, what's known as a Rolt Box or a cabinet throughout the metropolitan area. So they've identified Church Street as a good location. It's in the village's right-of-way, and we are working with them to soften the cabinet, soften the color of the bollards, and also do some planting shrubs in front of it. So federal law gives telecommunications companies a lot of power, so there's not much we can do or say, but we do have a good relationship with Cable Vision, so they're open to our suggestions and requests about, you know, sighting and softening the optics of it.
So here's Church Street, here's Green Meadow, here's headed up towards the town of Pleasant. The box is located right here on the village own right-of-way and not in the immediate relationship to any house. So we've been through quite a discussion about that. And as Eric indicated, Cable, Altice/Optimum has been cooperative, and it represents an investment in our community to provide stronger broadband. So any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Steve, 108.
108. Result that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for solid waste recyclables disposal for refuse disposal District Number One for the period October 22, 2019 to October 1, 2024. And there are two attachments to the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, this is the renewal of our relationship with the county's sanitation.
We send our sanitation to Charles Point. They have a tipping fee that we renew, and it's a set fee that's also subject to the Consumer Price Index in any given year.
So just to remind folks, the fee we pay when we take Pleasantville's garbage to Charles Point and Peak Skill to the trashed energy plant is based on weight. And so folks who are vigorously collecting their food scraps, as we are in my house, will notice that that turns out to be the heaviest part of your trash, and if we can divert that into our recycling/composting operation, less weight goes to Charles Point, and that helps recover the cost of doing the food scraps recycling. So shout-out to anyone who's not doing it. If you are so interested, you can purchase from Village 3rd Floor a kit that includes two different bins, one for countertop, one for storage, and a starter kit of bags, and you're off and running. So. All right. Comments on this resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 109. Joe, it's now frozen. Why is it frozen? There we go. Okay.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement number 20-804 with Westchester County for one-half of the cost of the scope of work performed by ELQ Industries, Inc. for improvements made wholly located within the county right-of-way in the vicinity of 486 Bedford Road for an amount not to exceed
All right, Eric.
All right. So this dates back to a lawsuit about eight years ago between Westchester County and the village and the previous property owner at 486 Bedford Road.
486 Bedford is the property that is between 711 and Cooley Street.
That's right. And an island was put in back then, which the property owner had issue with because it restricted larger vehicles from pulling out of that property. So lawsuit ensued. Part of the settlement that was reached, again, between the village and Westchester County and this property owner, was that at some point, the village and the county would undertake some improvements to the right-of-way. And so now with the Bedford Road project ongoing, this was the time to do these improvements. ELQ is a contractor hired by the county to do the Bedford Road project, so they're mobilized, they can come in and do it. It's some curb cuts and some grading, and our portion of that project will be about $2,100.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, we didn't have a second.
Oh, back up. Who's second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 110, approval of the minutes. David?
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on May 28, 2020, attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have commented in the past, the minutes are also accompanied by a word-for-word Zoom transcript, which is mostly word-for-word and occasionally auto-corrected into some crazy words. But it's there for your reading pleasure, if you're so inclined, and you can find it through our agendas via Pleasantville-NY.gov. Any comments or corrections to the May 28?
Question?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Back to Nicole, 111.
Oh, excuse me. Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments as listed below. Transfers in the general fund, $240 from contingent to Emergency Tenant Protection Act expenses, $9,863 from contingent to police overtime, $188. Whoops.
Sorry.
Right.
Getting ready for the next one, the last one.
Contingent to farmers market part-time for a total of $10,291.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? So this reflects some cleanup for the fiscal year ended 2020, which just ended at the end of May. We're now in the fiscal year ending 2021, began June 1. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 112, Steve?
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated June 8, 2020 for fiscal year 2020, covering check numbers 97483 to 97569, as listed below. From the general fund, $426,707.80. From the water fund, $15,816.80. From the refuse fund, $13,817.74, for a total of $456,342.42.
Is there a second?
Second.
As I've commented in the past, one of the blessings of the Zoom meeting, it's many problems, is that folks who want to follow along can follow along in Novus Agenda. You can click right in and read every single line of the expenses that accumulate to $456,000. That is always available to you as backup to our agenda. Again, click into our agendas at Pleasantville-NY.gov. It will take you to Novus Agenda, and there it all is. Comments or questions on the payment of claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Joe, 113.
Yes, just a moment. There we go. Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments as listed below. Budget transfers from the general fund, $375,290 from police detective full-time to, right, police detective full-time to police uniform full-time. Is that $5,500 or $55,000?
$55,000.
So there's a missing zero there. We should amend for the...
Yeah, amended $55,000.
Thank you. Correct.
$55,000 from police detective overtime to police uniform overtime. $18,767 from police detective holiday pay to police uniform holiday pay. $2,000 from police detective conference and training to police uniform conference and training. $4,560 from police detective supplies to police detective supplies. Looks like the same. I don't know.
Uniform.
So what's going on with that? The lines are different. A 3130...
The budget code number is right, the description's wrong.
Okay, so what's the right description?
Police uniform supplies on the right, right?
Right. Police uniform.
Police uniform supplies, so we do $4,560 from police detective supplies to police uniform supplies, and $2,650 from police detective dues and subscriptions to police uniform dues and subscriptions for a total of $458,267.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is current fiscal year adjustments.
This will be, right, for the start of the new fiscal year. Basically, we're combining the detective division budget lines into the uniform budget lines. As we, this is something that finances discuss with the Police Department. It's easier on the finance end to just have one set of accounts to pay out of. We have some officers that move from the uniform division to the detective division and move back, and so it's just easier, more streamlined to come out of one set of lines than two.
Right. And the result of that is no change in the overall budget, just the ledger and track-up. All right. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Quick comment. Just, hold on, just a quick comment on the overtime line. Isn't finance think it's valuable to track overtime between those two divisions? I mean, forms I get, and holiday pay and all that, but I would think overtime between detectives and uniform would be valuable to follow.
And...
We can definitely export that out of units in a different format, but because we had so much...
It's still tagged, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. No further comment or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 114. Whose turn was it?
I think...
David, yeah.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated June 8, 2020 for fiscal year 2021, covering check numbers 97435 to 97482, as listed below. From the general fund, $34,871.50. $0.51 from the water fund, $1,363.01. From the refuse fund, $1,61.14. From the trust fund, $12,100, for a total of $38,400. For a total of $38,495.66. Description attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that's the second round of payment of claims. This one for the first few, the first week or so of the new fiscal year. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 115, back to Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, June 22, 2020, at 8:00 p.m. via Zoom teleconference to hear comments on introductory Local Law 3 of 2020 to create Chapter A 190 of the Village Code concerning the creation and expansion of outdoor retail sales, gym operations, personal care services, and dining areas during the COVID-19 pandemic.
May I offer an amendment? If everybody's agreeable, the soonest we can have this public hearing would be seven days, not including Sunday, from the moment that it's landed on the board's desk. So here it is. This would start the seven-day clock, not to include Sunday. So the soonest we can have this public hearing would be Monday.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yes.
Good idea.
And this includes the potential for on-street outdoor dining at restaurants in addition to these other things, right?
Yes. So three scenarios. One, restaurants who would like to operate on their property. Two, operate in the village's right-of-way. And then three, operate in the village's right-of-way but potentially expand in front of another retailer. So let's say somebody's next-door neighbor is not... You own a restaurant, your next-door neighbor is not a restaurant, closes at 5:00 or 6:00. You'd like to expand your outdoor seating in front of their establishment. This creates a mechanism.
Will that require their permission?
That would require their permission.
From the retailer?
Yes, correct.
Right.
So Eric, were you proposing to change the date of the public hearing to accelerate it?
Yes.
To what?
Monday.
The 15th, Monday.
Monday, the 15th?
Yep.
How does that comport to the seven-day requirement, not including Sunday?
That would be seven days, right? Today is the 8th. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 would be...
Not including Sundays doesn't put it on Monday. It puts it on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
On Monday, it would be the seventh day.
Does that...
So it doesn't need to be seven full days on the 8th or seven on the seventh day?
Today counts?
Yes.
Okay. So on the seventh day is acceptable. It doesn't have to be the eighth day?
Right.
Okay. All right. So then we would hold the public hearing in a brief special meeting a week from today, Monday, June 15.
Do you want to do it at, do you want to move it up? Or would you like to keep it at 8:00 p.m.?
You want to say, what does the rest of the board think? You want to say 7:00 p.m.?
7:00 p.m. Yeah.
Okay.
Fine as well.
All right. So let's, consistent with everyone agreeing to that.
I have another meeting, but you guys can do it without me, right?
We can, as long as we have a quorum. It sounds likely that we will.
Yeah, I'll be there.
All right. So the mover and the seconder, did we have a seconder yet?
Second.
Okay. So mover and seconder are agreeable to revising it to read notice of public hearing for Monday, June 15, at 7:00 p.m. via Zoom da-da-da-da-da.
Yes.
Okay. Second are okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 116.
All right. It's all right, right? Yeah, Joe's laughing. All right. I'll read the whole thing. So where...
You could just read "from now, therefore be it resolved" and down.
Okay. So there's a long preamble before this that'll be available on the record. This is a resolution to authorize the village administrator to approve licensing agreements for outdoor businesses, outdoor business operations on public property. Now, therefore be it resolved that in order to further protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and to support the local economy and retail businesses, gym operations, personal care services, and restaurants in their slow and difficult recovery, the village needs it necessary to authorize the expansion of outdoor retail sales areas, gym operations, personal care services, and food establishment dining areas for a temporary period of time to allow such businesses to offer safe, socially-distanced outdoor shopping services and dining. Be it further resolved that the village has prepared and introduced a proposed local law to suspend the village's zoning and land-use approval requirements to allow the use of private and public property for outdoor business areas during the COVID-19 pandemic. Be it further resolved that while the village board reviews and processes the proposed local law concerning the creation and expansion of outdoor business areas, the village board hereby authorizes the village administrator to enter into license agreements with businesses to allow businesses to use designated public property for authorized business operations. Said license agreement shall be approved by the village attorney, excuse me, by the village attorney, as to form and substance. Be it further resolved that the village board hereby directs the village administrator to establish an application form and guidelines for businesses. Any business seeking a license agreement to use village property shall contact the village administrator to obtain an application form and copy of the guidelines. So just a few more. Be it further resolved that all businesses must conform to New York State's physical distance and guidelines and will only be authorized to operate when authorized to do so by the state of New York. Be it further resolved that any business that has entered into a license agreement with the village pursuant to this resolution shall obtain an outdoor business area permit as described in the proposed local law concerning the creation and expansion of outdoor business areas and shall comply with all requirements set forth therein upon the adoption of said local law. Be it further resolved that nothing herein shall be deemed to supersede any New York State or federal requirements, including those dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. And lastly, be it further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes and empowers the village administrator to take all actions necessary to implement the purpose of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Comments? These are weighty responsibilities we're handing to the village administrator, but he's equal.
His shoulders are broad.
Yeah. It'll be with the help of Robert Hughes, no doubt.
You got it.
And a big help that is. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have one more resolution that was added, and for reasons that elude us, oh, it has appeared now here. There we go. It showed up.
Approve waiver of parking meter fees. Ooh.
Steve.
So read that out. We'll get a second, and then I'll explain what our thinking was.
Who, me?
Steve.
That's you.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves waiver of all parking meter fees effective Monday, June 15, 2020, through Tuesday, June 30, 2020, with all parking meter fees resuming as of Wednesday, July 1, 2020. And further resolved that all parking time limits will remain in effect during the waiver of parking meter fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we added this at the last minute. Eric and Noreen and I chatted about it. And if anyone disagrees, feel free to chime in. Our previous waiver of the fees was going to end. And as of June 15, parking meter fees would have been reinstated. It certainly feels as though we could extend that further. And especially with Phase 2 opening maybe feels like a modest way in which we can help folks. Our parking permits have been sent out for renewal effective July 1, later than usual. And so pending any change we might imagine was necessary as we get closer to this date, this would align the on-street parking meters with the renewal of permits. Sound logical?
Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. All right. That's the last of our resolutions. Is there any new business anyone wanted to bring up?
I just want to get clarity. On Monday night, we have a 7:00 meeting for the purpose of outdoor dining, or whatever it may be. On Thursday night, what time are we meeting?
So this coming Thursday, the idea was to meet to update all of you about the conversation that takes place with the restaurant owners about outdoor dining. So that's Thursday, the 11th, three days from today. You want to call that 7:00 too? Does that work?
Yeah.
All right. We'll notice a 7:00 Zoom meeting to update you on the Zoom meeting that we had at 10:00 a.m. And any board members who want to participate? I know David expressed an interest. We'll forward the Zoom link if you want to participate. At that 10:00 a.m. call, feel free. But otherwise, Paul and I will be on the call, and we'll update you the goings-on. Does that work for you? 7:00 p.m. Thursday, Paul? Fingers up. Okay, good. All right. So 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, the 11th, to talk about the results of the Zoom meeting with the restaurants. And then 7:00 p.m. on Monday, the 15th, for a public hearing about the local law.
And then the other thing is, can we just have an item on the agenda on the 22nd to talk about generally the pool plans or no plans, or whatever it is? Just...
Absolutely.
Something on there on the 22nd.
All right. Any further comment or question?